Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. This meeting is called to order. City of Helena City Commission Meeting, September 7, 2021, 6:00 PM. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Administration Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome public, public commentary. And please read the following tips and guidelines for app usage in your participation. Please. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Jordan.
Here.
City Manager Harlow Schalk.
Here.
Commissioner Holliday. Mr. Mayor, if I recall, Commissioner Holliday did indicate that he may be a bit late due to the Board of Adjustment Meeting. For the record. Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Loughlin. Here. Mayor Collins.
Here. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Madam Clerk. Pledge allegiance to the flag. The Republic for which it stands. Thank you. Minutes. Our regular commission minutes from May 17, 2021, June 28, 2021, July 12, 2021, August 9, 2021 were received. Do we have any comments or questions or? Anything? If not, the minutes will be received as submitted. Proclamation. Suicide Prevention Month. Do we have a representative of Volunteers of America present? Okay, I'll read the proclamation and it, and we will turn to the representative afterwards. City of Helena Proclamation. Whereas Suicide Prevention Month brings together individuals and organizations around the country and the world to raise awareness that suicide can be prevented. Treatment is effective and people do recover. And whereas every person in every community has a responsibility to identify the warning signs, start an honest conversation about suicide which, with someone who is in crisis, and become familiar with resources to offer a person who is in need. And whereas, in these challenging times, messages of hope and healing I needed more than ever. And preventing suicide requires the efforts of all community members, from individual friends, families, neighbors, coworkers, to government agencies and community organizations from a wide range of sectors. And whereas suicide is a public health issue that directly impacts our community and requires connection and support to reduce suicide risks. And whereas, the City of Helena recognizes that resiliency, strong relationship, access to clinical care and healthy behaviors help protect people against suicide. And whereas the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, and other local organizations are committed to a comprehensive suicide prevention approach that encompasses strat strategies, strategies for community education, prevention, early intervention, treatment, postvention after death has occurred. Whereas September is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Month and provides the opportunity to, to do more by being the one to ask, being the one to keep them safe, being the one to be there, being the one to help them stay connected, and being the one to follow up. Now therefore, I Wilma J. Collins, Mayor of the City of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as Suicide Prevention Month, hope, resilience, and recovery throughout the City of Helena, Montana. In witness hereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana to be affixed this 7th day of September 2021. Wilma Collins, Mayor, attest clerk of the Commission, Dana Clayborne. Do we have a representative of? The Volunteers of America present? Danielle Gilleski. Madam Clerk.
If a representative from Volunteers of America could raise their hand to confirm they're in the attendees, I would appreciate it.
Do we have any?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any hands raised without a full name. I can't confirm.
Okay, we'll continue. Board appointments. A. Airport Authority Commission, Board of Adjustment, Business Improvement District. Heritage Preservation, Tourism Board, Non-Motorized Travel Advisory. I'm recommending the following board appointments. Airport Authority Commission, reappoint Tom McGree to a second term on the Helena Authority, Airport Authority Commission. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on September 1, 2024. Business Improvement District, appointment of Seth Brandon Burger to an interim appointment to the BID. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on October 31, 2022. City County Heritage Preservation and Tourism Board, reappointment of Tom Cornell to a second term on the City County Heritage Preservation and Tourism Board as a joint member. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on June 30, 2024. Non-motorized Driver Advisory Council, appointment of Kevin Recoff to a first term on a non-motorized travel advisory council. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on March 31, 2021. Do we have any comments, questions from the Commission? Okay. And for? Public comments, I just have a statement I would like to read to the members of the public participating tonight. I'd like to address the use of the public comment period. You may ask questions during the public comment period. However, the intent of the public comment period is to provide comment on a specific item and not engage in back and forth. A Commission member may take up your question and direct it to the City Manager on the public's behalf. This is at the discretion of the Commission. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. Do we have any public comments on this? On the board appointments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one hand raised, however, if this did pop up right as we were moving on from the suicide prevention from Linda Kinsey, so it may be related to that previous item, but I will allow Ms. Kinsey to speak.
Go ahead, Ms. Kinsey. If you have comments related to the board appointments.
My comments are in relation to the Suicide Prevention Proclamation.
We'll come back to that after the board appointment.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. Any comments? Commissioners? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move the approval of the following board appointments. Airport Authority Commission, reappointment of Tom McGree to a second term on the Helena Airport Authority Commission. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on September 1, 2024. Business Improvement District, an appointment of Seth Brandon Burger to an interim appointment of the BID. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on October 31, 2022. The City County Heritage Preservation and Tourism Board, the reappointment of Tom O'Connell to a second term on the City County Heritage Preservation and Tourism Board as its joint member. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on June 30, 2024. The Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Council, the appointment of Kevin Recoff to a first term on the Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Council. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on March 31, 2024.
Second.
To move in second, I do have any discussion? From the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, apologize. Commissioner Holliday.
Hi.
Commissioner Dean.
Hi.
Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consent Agenda A, claims. Madam Manager.
Good evening, Mayor. I recommend you entertain a motion on consent to approve claims for August 4th, 6th, and 13th of 2021 for a total of $1,638,847.37.
Any discussion from the Commission?
Mayor, do you want us to take these items together? If so, it would be maybe helpful to get an explanation of the second item as well.
Okay. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item? Six B is the West Side Major Phase Subdivision Applicants Request for a 30 Workday Extension to the Subdivision Review Period. The request is that the city move any decision deadlines from October 30, excuse me, October 13, 2021, to November 29, 2021. This conforms with State and State Statute MCA 76-3-608, which requires that a governing body evaluate the impacts of a subdivision proposal. The applicant's preliminary engineering report used a coefficient other than that which is required by the city's engineering standards. And as a result, the applicant has agreed to resubmit with the correct coefficient, which results in a better understanding of the impacts of the subdivision into the wastewater system. This is just an extension to ensure that the details of that impact onto the water, the wastewater system, is appropriately evaluated when the item comes before the Commission. So Mayor, I recommend you entertain a motion on consent to approve the applicant for the West Side Major Phase Subdivision request of a 30-day work extension from October 13 to 2021 to November 29, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Do we have any comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment specific to the consent agenda. I do, however, have Ms. Kinsey.
Yes.
Still available. Would you like me to give?
Madam, yes, would you please? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move item A, Claims, and item B, West Side Major Phase Subdivision Applicants Request for a 30 Working Day Extension to the Subdivision Review Period, thus moving the city's decision deadline from October 13, 2021, to November 29, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Holliday.
Hi.
Commissioner Dean.
Hi.
Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Is there a second one there? Well, okay. Yes. Ms. Kinsey? You have the floor to say a few words on September being our Suicide Prevention Month.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'm here on behalf of the Suicide, Lewis and Clark County Suicide Prevention Coalition, as well as the Helena Indian Alliance. We have a week, and I'd like to thank you for your proclamation in support of Suicide Prevention Month in September. There's a, I don't know if they sent you the calendar, but the Coalition has prepared a calendar of events throughout the month here in Helena and the local areas in support of suicide prevention activities. And I just am here to thank you and hope that individuals and yourselves may be able to participate in some of those suicide prevention activities. I don't have the specific calendar in front of me, but it's posted pretty much all over town and also at Lewis and Clark County. So again, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, in support of suicide prevention. Here at Helena Indian Alliance, we do have a five-year suicide prevention grant in which would offer suicide prevention activities throughout the community. So thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsey. And you can pick up the proclamation from the City Commission Office. And if you do have the activities, the agenda activities for the, for the month of September, you can drop them off also at the office for us to? Take a look at them? And participate as we see.
Thank you so much. We'll do that tomorrow.
You bet.
Okay.
Communications proposals from the Commission.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Couple, if I may, I'll try to be brief. The first being, I'd like to? Say thanks, I guess, to a number of people, but we'll start with the Helena Fire Department for their response last night at, or this morning at 2:00 AM for what we in the business call a good stop. They were, there was a fire reported at 24 South Ewing, which we know better as maybe as the Tower Hill Apartments. And upon their arrival, or as they were headed to the scene, there, there was a great deal, great volume of fire blowing out the east side, is my understanding. I got a really good, thorough report from Assistant Chief Mike Chambers, and he said as they pulled up. Because they had the staffing available on their first-in unit, they were able to establish a water supply and get water on the fire very quickly and, and really stop what could have been much worse incidents. And, and so I'd like to say thanks to a number of, first of all, to Shift Three, led by my old compatriots, Bob Harvey, Battalion Chief Bob Harvey, and Captain Scott Bachman for their leadership of the incident. And the rest of the crew for their initial response, but also to the many responding agencies that, that helped in the effort. Notably, the Helena Police Department, Baxendale Fire Department, West Valley, East Valley, Montana City, and the VA Fire Departments in, in assisting our fire department in, in that. And also to the Red Cross, a lot of people don't know that during incidents like these, people are displaced and in need of shelter in, in short order. And the, it sounds like the Red Cross took care of about 40 people last night. And, and according to Assistant Chief Chambers, it sounds like about half of them are going to be able to return tonight. But so, so thanks to those folks, and I, I guess I'd also like to say thanks to the Helena public. I, I think it's important to note on an incident like this that their support of the 2018 levy enabled the, the first arriving units to have enough manpower to establish their own water supply and get water on it, on it very quickly as opposed to waiting for the seconds, the units from this, from Station Two to arrive. So a lot of things came to play last night that, that resulted in an effective outcome with no human injury that was reported. It sounded like there were the loss of a couple of cats, which is unfortunate, but anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Secondly, if, I, I guess I'd want to express some concerns that I'd heard from folks, I think in early August, users of the Bill Roberts Golf Course. And they, I think they voiced those not only to me, but to the, the whole Commission. And, and so I was, I was hoping that away from me as an individual Commissioner, better stay in touch with the golf courses, is to attend their golf advisory board. And I just wanted to make sure that, that there were no concerns or objections on the part of the Commission. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's no objection from me, and that's for sure. I mean, I think it should be open to the public anyway. Any other comments of communications proposals from the Commission?
Yeah, Mayor, just maybe one item for me. I, I guess I just wanted to see if we wanted to queue up a conversation about the extent to which we want to formally move Commission meetings back to remote. We are all sitting remote today. So I wasn't sure if that was on the City Manager's agenda tonight to have that conversation or if that should be queued up another way. But I, I don't know who's currently sitting in the Commission chambers, but just for purposes of disclosure and transparency, I just wonder if we want to move it back so that everybody's sort of on the same, you know, wavelength as far as how we're communicating.
Thank you. And I would want to, thanks for that, Commissioner. Madam, Madam Manager. And, you know, for me, I want to hear from the county health where they're at with us moving back into the chamber or not. So if you can get some information from them about our participation in the chamber, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. I absolutely will. And Commissioner Loughlin, I don't know that it's necessary for formal decision-making in order for you all to decide that you would like to stay and completely move to remote. We've left the room open so that individuals from the public who would like to come in could do so. But certainly, we can talk more around and send you information from the Health Department that outlines some protective measures if you would like to go hybrid, and I'll provide those options to you. Thank you, Mayor.
And quite frankly, I don't mind going hybrid. But it's left for the rest of the Commission. Any other comments or so? In fact, we can, we can discuss that right now, if you so please. What are, what is your will and pleasure, Commissioner Dean?
I would be interested in hearing what county health has to say. I know that they have been making their decisions on their data, their decision-making dashboard, the matrix that correlates to, you know, transmission rates and everything else. Obviously, things are higher now than they have been in a long time. So I would be anxious to hear? Their, their thoughts and if they have any, you know, is there a rate where we really should say, no, not in person anymore? Or do they feel like hybrid is sufficient with some people in and some people, you know, fewer staff, that we have had fewer staff in the chambers too, even, even we are. But I would be anxious to hear if, if Drenda has any thoughts on it as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Logan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm actually, as we read each day in the paper about the increased instances of COVID-19 and the transmissibility of the Delta variant and all of those numbers, I think I'm certainly okay with conducting these by Zoom.
Thank you. Commissioner Holliday.
Yeah, I mean, I think I would support going back to Zoom if that's where we're going to predominantly be and making that clear for people just so that they understand the, the cleanest, easiest mechanism we're going to do. But also, you know, Lewis and Clark County, I think, was the second highest in the state for reporting cases over the holiday weekend, right? So we also have to think about not just whether we're going to leave it hybrid, but whether we're going to be inviting people into a less safe circumstance to observe our meetings when we've got this easy, much safer opportunity for meetings. So I'd, I'd be comfortable going back to full Zoom.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Loughlin.
Yeah, I, I guess I would echo what Commissioner Logan shared and would be comfortable moving back to remote, remote, given where we sit. But if, you know, if there's a desire to hear from public health, I'm comfortable with that as well.
Thank you. All right. Reporter of the City Attorney. Attorney Jordan.
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Reporter of the City Manager, Manager Halder-Schalk.
Good evening, Commission. Thank you, Mayor. I, a couple of announcements first. I would like to recommend that you entertain a motion from the Commission to table item 11A. The need for the emergency ordinance no longer exists, and we would like to bring it back through the appropriate process for an ordinance passing. The emergency ordinance was based on timing with a potential franchise, and we no longer have that urgency and would recommend the Commission. And Mayor, you entertain a motion to table that item. Also, want to make sure and say thank you very much to our team as well. I appreciate Commissioner Logan's update to you all and look forward to and appreciate the broader conversation about fire response and the work of our team to analyze what that looks like for Helena citywide, and especially when it becomes a part of these, these structures that are more than one floor and higher occupancy. So I really appreciate not only the team who were responding to the fire and our partners and the Red Cross, but also the work that was done in advance. And that was from all of the team in our history who had done the inspections and verified that the building met the fire code at the time. I had an opportunity today to walk the fire itself with, with the fire chief and the team and appreciated the two-hour firewalls that are required by city code. That really does make a huge difference. And all of the fire code expectations do play out in these, in these fires. And I appreciate the, you know, the adoption of the international code, but also the effort that goes into and the time spent in creating those codes across the country. There weren't elevators in this building, so it's an important fact. And we were very lucky that no one was harmed. So I'm in agreement with Commissioner Logan that I'm very thankful to see that there was no one harmed either in our team or in the community. So that is good news. This is in the last three months since the beginning of the summer. This is the third multi-level high. This is the third multi-level high occupancy or greater occupancy fire we've had in the community. This one had no sprinklers within it. I shared the elevator. One of the questions that I asked the commissioner, excuse me, not the commissioner, the fire chief today was what would be the reason why if we had sprinklers and a fire hydrant, why would we need to send out a fire truck in addition?
Recording in progress.
I think there's always a question around that additional need for a fire response. And I think today was a very good example in that an elderly person and a rescue is part of that fire response team. An elderly person could not have taken an elevator. Also, systems fail, and ultimately, we are in an earthquake zone, and there is potential for fire beyond just what we have in such a situation, which includes gas and gas explosions. So we need to have the truck to bring people out to help in that rescue, but it also provides that secondary potential support needed should there be an additional release come as a result of the emergency. So I just wanted to underscore the importance of the work we do every day here in inspections and working with our development community and working with our building inspections program as it continues. And so thank you, fire marshals, as well for all of your work. Last, I wanted to make sure and share to you that I sent out last week the expectation to our team for operations that when we're in a state of substantial or high transmission rate, that we implement more protection measures for our team members. And in particular, I wanted to make sure you are aware that anytime we're having events with people of fifty people or more, that those are no longer permitted. We are keeping our higher occupancy gatherings down and intentionally within our staff to reduce our potential for spreading COVID among our team as well. There was conversation about the public gatherings and what's happening in our civic center. In departments, they can implement any further restrictions or expectations they have around the team. And the staff in the civic center are working with any events into the future that may have expectations. So Attorney Joden is a part of those conversations and appreciate that the team is not only looking at what they can do to reduce the transmission among our teammates, but also for those who visit our facilities. As far as the public meeting itself, tonight's meeting, I'll share to you. I requested that the staff participate virtually so that we could ensure reduced occupancy in the chambers since it was published as an open meeting in the chambers. And want to make sure that you know, whenever we move to hybrid meetings or even in person, we'll always, I will always underscore the need for space in the chambers for our team members. If there is not a need to be there, they do not need to be there. And I appreciate that we're continuing to be in Zoom as well. If you have any other questions of me around the expectations of team members, I do believe you receive a copy of my notices when I send them out. Around mask wearing, you will see I have asked that all team members wear masks within facility again to reduce when they're in public areas or around the public, and they cannot socially distance. Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any other items for sharing this with you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Do we have any comments or questions for the manager? Then I'll move on to, I'll entertain a motion to table regular item eight.
Mayor, I will move to table regular item 11A. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean? Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Eleven Bravo. Consider first passage of an ordinance amending Title V, Chapter Seven of the Helena City Code by changing certain definitions found in five dash seven dash eleven, setting a public hearing date for September twenty, twenty twenty-one. Manager Holashok?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is brought forward by our city attorney team, and it is specific to noise ordinance revisions that have been delayed and needed to be brought forward. The city attorney's office is working through a variety of cleanup within our city code and would offer input from Assistant City Attorney Eric Coe, who is here to provide additional input.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Manager. Mayor and Commission, Title V, Chapter Seven of the Helena City Code is the city's noise ordinance. The ordinance regulates the noise levels that are allowed in certain areas of town. And the way it does that is by dividing the city into three noise districts, a residential district, a commercial district, and an industrial district, with the industrial district allowing the most noise and the residential districts allowing the least amount of noise. And of course, the commercial then falls in between. The problem is the way the ordinance is currently worded, certain residential and commercial districts in the city of, sorry, residential and commercial zones within the city of Helena fall into the industrial noise district. And the problem with that, of course, is that there's going to be more noise allowed in those residential and commercial zones than probably should be. Specifically, residential zones R four, residential urban, open space residential are considered industrial, and commercial zones downtown, transitional residential, and public lands and institutions are currently considered industrial. What this ordinance will do is it will correct those problems. It will place those residential zones R four, residential urban, and open space residential into the residential noise district, and it will place commercial zones downtown, transitional residential, public lands and institutions into the commercial noise district. So that's the purpose of this ordinance, and we ask that you consider first passage of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coe. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have just a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess, is there any real appreciable difference, I guess, for what we're currently experiencing in a lot of the areas right now? I'm thinking, for example, like concerts on the walking mall. Does this impact what folks currently are experiencing right now?
I'll direct questions to Assistant City Attorney Eric Coe. I don't believe so, but I do believe it's more along the lines of cleaning up some of that ordinance. So we're in alignment across, but I'll defer to Mr. Coe.
The manager is correct. We have not received specific complaints regarding this issue, the current issue with the ordinance. This was noticed by a citizen who brought it to our attention when they were trying to understand our noise ordinances. And then also with concerts, usually those are permitted anyway, and so they are allowed to deviate from what's found in the ordinance.
Great. Mr. Mayor, if I could have a follow-up?
Please.
So I'm thinking of an email that we got from a resident a little while ago about concerts at Lewis and Clark, and which maybe is what you're referring to. I'm not sure. So if they are, I guess, how does this impact something like that?
Thank you, Commissioner. Oh, sorry about that, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner and Mayor. The ordinance is around, I believe, noise levels, not the impact of that noise near the homes or the time of day in which those concerts are occurring. But I'll refer again more directly to city attorney, or Assistant City Attorney Coe.
You have the floor, Mr. Coe.
So usually, when we provide a permit for concerts, there are certain parameters within which the permittee is required to operate. The noise level will have to stop at a certain time. For example, I think also the problem with the Lewis and Clark concert is not necessarily that the amount of noise was not, was forbidden in that district, that noise district. I think that's more of a noise pollution issue where the noise may have been permitted in that specific district, but it was bleeding over into a residential area.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no written public comment or hands raised online, and I have no one here in the chambers.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve first passage of an ordinance amending Title V, Chapter Seven of the Helena City Code by changing certain definitions found in five dash seven dash eleven and setting a public hearing date for September twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Eleven Charlie, consider a resolution annexing an eleven-point-four acre parcel. Madam Manager, would you, yes, thank you. No. I don't know what's going on with your end there, but you have this noise. Eleven Charlie, consider a resolution annexing an eleven-point-four-two acre parcel from the tract legally described as tract A one, A one, A one, A one, A one, A. As shown on certificate of survey number three-three-six-eight-four-one-five, generally located north of Jeanette Rankin Drive and east of South Alley Street in Lewis and Clark County, Montana, into the city of Helena. Madam Holashok?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure. I apologize for any background noise you may be hearing. So thank you for the flag that there, my microphone might be impacting. And between this item and the following item are all within the same eleven-point-four-two acre portion and are reflective of the Crestman Village major subdivision. I have, I know I can see Director Haugen is on from Community Development. If she would like to provide an update on both this item and this, and if you'll entertain the item that's following, item D, as well, so that you understand the interconnection of the two as you entertain both, if you're interested, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Director Haugen, would you do Charlie and Delta, please?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, with your permission, I would like to turn this over to Mike McConnell. He's a staff person who's been handling this case, if that's okay with the mayor.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. I was Michael McConnell, the staff for this case. So this is in regards to the annexation of the Crestman Village Phase Six major subdivision in Mountain View Meadows. So this is a fairly rough aerial photo of the subject property to be annexed and finalized. You can see it's just north of Mountain View Park in Mountain View Meadows. So the applicant is requesting final annexation into the city of Helena for Crestman Village Phase Six. Both preliminary plat approval and the resolution of intention to annex were approved on May seventh, twenty twelve. It is an eleven-point-four-two acre site with four new street freeways being created as a result. It is currently vacant, but it is pre-zoned via ordinance thirty-one oh nine R four to the multifamily residential zone, though this will be preliminarily, sorry, primarily single-family subdivision. Adjacent land uses are mainly vacant. On the south side, there is a, another phase of Crestman Village, and that has already been finalized. So these are the conditions of approval for the annexation. Each phase of the grassroots amendment needs to have city services and be adjacent to city limits. That condition is met. It is against Crestman Village Phase Four. And the interim acceptance has been received on June seventeenth, and the financial guarantee for the remainder of the infrastructure was approved on August nineteenth. So each phase must provide a legal description for it that has been provided as part of the final plat application. The fire station lot is not necessarily included in this phase, but due to how phase subdivisions were handled at the time of preliminary plat approval, it must be accounted for here. So the resolution twenty-three forty basically planted the fire station lot responsibility to when that specific area of Mountain View Meadows is developed. So it is not included in this phase. The review of new construction, this property, these properties will be subject to building, fire, and zoning codes on annexation and final plat approval. The taxes and assessments must be paid, and proof of that was submitted with the application still current. Notice of special districts, the property owner is waiving the rights to notification protest consent to the alteration of the Urban Forest Maintenance District and the Land Management District. And those are both signed, authorized, and included in the packet. And lastly, the final plat conditions must met, and we are, we'll get to those here in a moment. So the motion for this one is to approve a resolution annexing the Crestman Village Phase Six of the grassroots at Mountain View Meadows subdivision in Lewis and Clark County into the city of Helena, Montana. Are there any questions about the annexation before we go on, or does this need to be followed on individually?
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. McConnell, you know, it was difficult to hear you clearly. I don't know what's going on with your microphone, but I'm sure I was not the only person trying to pay keen attention to what you were trying to say. Do you have any comments or questions from the commission? Do you have any public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I do have one hand raised in the online meeting. Greg Worth.
Go ahead, Mr. Worth.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Greg Worth, W I R T H, with Staley Engineering at thirty-five thirty Centennial Drive. Like to thank Michael McConnell, the Planning Department, City Attorney, and the Engineering Office. I'll also provide some additional commentary on the next agenda item, the final plat. But this is for the resolution intent to annex. We've met all eight conditions, and by meeting all conditions, we request approval of annexation and moving on to the next agenda item, which will be the final plat of this property that's being annexed. So I'm also available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worth. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I have a question just because I'm curious. So I know, you know, Mountain View Meadows comes up pretty frequently, and I think it's almost nine hundred lots that were in that original. I think it's almost nine hundred lots that were in that original twenty twelve approval, but I'm just curious how many of those lots have been developed so far and how many are left?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I'm not certain how many have been developed. There's been quite a bit of movement over the course of the ten years that it's been active, but there, a good portion of that has since been it's it's no longer active and has expired, I suppose is the best way to put it. So I would maybe ask Greg Worth if he has that figure handed.
Mr. Worth. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Worth.
I don't have the exact number. I would speculate that out of the total nine hundred lots, say, a quarter to a third may have been developed would be my best guess at this point.
I see. We also have Mr. Runkel on if he wants to add anything. You have the floor, sir. Madam Clerk, would you raise him?
Okay, I'm, am I, can you hear me? I'm unmuted.
Loud and clear.
Okay, thank you. There are roughly four hundred lots, I would say, that have been developed now, probably around a little bit less than that, but maybe three hundred and twenty five or so sold and lived in residences. The nine hundred would not necessarily include the entire development, as Michael had said, but in addition to that, we made the lots narrower and more lots than we would have expected in order to make sure that there were reductions as we went and that the infrastructure, the sewer and water infrastructure were definitely robust enough to complete the development. So I wish I had time to research that, but I would say that maybe almost half of the ones that we're going to develop from that preliminary plat.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Runkel, would you turn your mic off, please? Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Any further public comments? Madam Clerk, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve a resolution annexing the Craftsman Village Phase Six of the Crossroads at Mountain View Meadows subdivision in Lewis and Clark County into the city of Helena, Montana.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay. We'll go down to Delta. Consider approval of the final plat for the Craftsman Village major subdivision creating forty one lots and streets right away from approximately eleven point four two acres and to accept the dedication to the city of the property and public improvements to designate it hereon for property legally described as an approximately eleven point four two acres portion of A1, 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 A1 as shown on certificate of survey number three, three, six, eight, four, one, five in the record of the clerk and recorder of Lewis and Clark County. Madam Hollis Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. This item ties to the previous item eleven C, and it is the plat for this same area, and includes the dedication of right of ways as well as the accepted, an exception of property being dedicated to the city. I'll turn it over also to Director Haugen and Planner Mike McConnell.
You have the floor, Director.
Mr. Mayor, I again request that you allow Michael McConnell to give this presentation.
Go ahead, Mr. McConnell.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you. As Ms. Hollis Shaw said, this is for the final plat for the Craftsman Village Phase Six major subdivision. Again, this is the same rapid sending map ordering Jeanette Rankin Drive and South Alice Street. The applicant is requesting final plat approval for Craftsman Village Phase Six of the Crossroads Amendment at Mountain View Meadows. This is, this will create forty one new lots, thirty nine of them will be buildable. The remainder, the two, will be open space and leave for a sign and for mailboxes. This will create four new street right of way, and finally, it is vacant. Hopefully, the rest of it will be just. So these are the preliminary plat conditions of approval from the findings of fact, May seventh, twenty twenty one. Not all of them apply to this specific phase, so I highlighted the ones that do in gray. So condition number one, each phase must provide adequate infrastructure, and the phases must be sequenced so that phases.
Mr. McConnell, can you move closer to your microphone? You're muffled, you're muffled.
Apologies. Is this better, Mr. Mayor?
I think so.
Okay. So each phase must provide adequate infrastructure, including water and sewer and access. The phases must be sequenced so that they are adjacent to a previously final platted phase. This condition is met. It is adjacent to Craftsman Village Phase Four, and the interim acceptance was received June seventeenth and financially financially guaranteed on August nineteenth. Condition number two, the intersection of Highway two eight and Runcle Parkway must be improved, and that has since been approved with city project oh six dash four three. Each phase of the Crossroads Amendment must demonstrate adequate transportation network and that it maintains a level of service and compliance with city standards. That condition has been met via the preliminary plat transportation impact statement. Let's get number four, that does not pertain to this particular phase. Number five, vehicular access restrictions must be shown on the final plat for Alice Street and Runcle Parkway, and those are noted on the final plat. Number six, the proposed street names would need to be accepted, and they have been. Condition number seven, the street ID signs must be installed prior to final plat approval, and they have been installed. Number eight, the bike ped paths must be located in a twenty foot right of way and be installed or financially guaranteed. This one is has been met, but via a different method than was originally intended. The applicant has replaced a north-south bike ped path with a street providing, you know, more connectivity than a bicycle or pedestrian path would have. So staff deemed that to be a non-material change. Nine and ten have been previously taken care of with another phase. Number eleven, all city-owned and maintained infrastructure must be located in a right of way or a twenty foot wide access and maintenance even, and they they have been. The easement documents should be in your packet as well. The water and sewer mains must be extended to facilitate future connections, and they they have been extended to this property. The infrastructure plans must be submitted to the Public Works Department. They have acceptance June seventeenth, financially guaranteed, August nineteenth. None of these are applicable to this phase. They have to do with stormwater in parks which have been taken care of with the previous phase. Jeffney Frame Open Space and Whorgill Street are not part of this phase either. And then the wetlands and the drainage and blocks six, seven, and nine are also not part of this phase. So the motion for this particular item is move to approve the final plat for the Craftsman Village Phase Six major subdivision creating forty one lots and street right of way from approximately eleven point four two acres and to accept the dedication to the city of the property and public improvements so designated thereon for property legally legally described as an approximately eleven point four two acre portion of track A1, 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 A1A, as shown on COS number three, three, six, eight, four, one, five in the records of the clerk and recorder, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. If there are any questions for me, I'd be happy to address those now.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Any comments or questions from the commission? Do you have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have one hand raised online that would be of Greg Worth.
You have the floor, Mr. Worth.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. Again, like to thank Mr. Michael McConnell and the City's Attorneys Engineering Office for facilitating the final plating and annexation here. The final plat will create thirty nine single-family residential lots. They're located immediately east of Alice Street and north of Mountain View Park and adjacent to Craftsman Village Phase Four, which was plotted in twenty eighteen. Primary plat approval was on May seventh, twenty twelve, had nineteen conditions with all of them being satisfied for this phase. Parkland for this phase is provided with the combination of open space, the two parks that will, two small parks will be managed by the HOA for a signage park and small park, pocket park for mailboxes, and then from also from the existing bank from Mountain View Park, which is a city dedicated city park. Project has received interim acceptance on the underground utilities. Surface improvements are financially guaranteed to facilitate the final plating. Carbon gutter is currently installed, as you have seen from the pictures. Gravel base course is being installed, and asphalt paving is imminent in advance of home construction. The plat creates residential lots to provide much-needed workforce housing in the Helena market. Mountain View Meadows is the primary supplier of owner-occupied homes within the city of Helena. Each Craftsman Village home contributes approximately three thousand five hundred to four thousand dollars in yearly property taxes. And with that, on behalf of Mountain View Meadows, we'd request approval of the final plat. View Meadows has received a great amount of interest, and the final plat will allow immediate home construction. I'm also available to answer any questions, and Mark Runkel with Mountain View Meadows is also in attendance.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the commission? Public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Move to approve the final plat for the Craftsman Village Phase Six major subdivision creating forty one lots and street right of way from approximately eleven point four two acres and to accept the dedication to the city of the property and public improvements so designated thereon. The property legally described as an approximately eleven point four two acre portion of tract A1, 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 A1A, as shown on certificate of survey number three, three, six, eight, four, one, five, in the records of the clerk and recorder of Lewis and Clark County, Montana.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Echo, consider a dedication of sixty foot wide Vandelay Avenue right of way and the seventy foot wide Oak Street right of way to allow for constructions of sidewalks and on-street parking within public right of way for property generally located south of Prospect Avenue, north of Eleventh Avenue, and east of North Sanders Street in the city of Helena, Montana. Manager Hollis Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This property and this dedication of Vandelay Avenue right of way is part of the mall redevelopment and right in the heart of Helena here, and represents a larger effort that the city's been under for quite some time. Both the right of ways are being vacated and discontinued with the adoption of Resolution twelve seventy nine. They were, excuse me, vacated with the resolution of with Resolution twelve seventy nine on December sixteenth in nineteen twelve. So the former mall that stood on site was demolished in recent years, and the property is currently being redeveloped. I know that Director Haugen is here as well as Planner Ellie Ray to provide a presentation this evening, and I do believe we also have members of the development team here as well, but to offer up questions and responses. But this is to consider the dedication and allow for construction of sidewalks, you know, and on-street parking. Thank you.
Thank you. City Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, and thank you, City Manager Hollis Shaw, for the introductions, his presentation. So as was mentioned, tonight, you're being asked to just consider the dedication of two rights of way, the eastern portion of Vandelay Avenue, that would be east of Sanders Street, and Oak Street that runs between Eleventh and Prospect. And the background for this application is that we received this summer an amended plat application from Marcus Bonda, D and M Development LLC. And as was previously mentioned, they're looking to reestablish Oaks and also establish Vandelay Avenue from what was formerly a vacated alley that, as was mentioned, was discontinued, vacated nearly a hundred and ten years ago. So with this amended plat application, the applicants are looking to relocate boundary lines, aggregate some lots, do retracing work, and dedicate these streets as local streets. The amended plat does show that Oak Street would be dedicated as a seventy-foot right of way. And the applicant has been requesting that Vandelay Avenue be dedicated at fifty feet. The city has adopted engineering and design standards, complete street standards, public right-of-way accessibility guidelines, as well as fire codes. Each of these requires that local streets have a minimum width of sixty feet. So as you can see, Oak Street does comply and is consistent with these adopted codes and standards. However, Vandelay at fifty feet, as opposed by the applicants, not meet these standards and would therefore fail to provide all the necessary components of a local street. So just to refresh your memory, if you're unfamiliar or haven't seen in a while, I wanted to provide you with a transect of what a local street actually looks like with all of its individual components that actually create the sixty feet right of way. So some of the information that's on this slide actually is or pulled directly from the city's engineering standards, and it says in part in places that each right of way has to have a minimum sidewalk on each side for a bike and pedestrian path. All streets have to accommodate complete street policy and be consistent with the greater Helena Transportation Plan. It does also note that there are instances where deviations could be permitted with sufficient justification. And you can see here, some of the text says that showings could be made that the street involved is a local side street with no fronting buildings, which would not be the case in the present instance where all the proposed developments face onto Vandelay. It's showing that a deviation is warranted by applicable zoning or showing that adjoining uses provide sufficient off-street parking. So there are some things to consider with this, some advantages and disadvantages of these rights-of-way dedication. The chief advantage is being the fact that in rededicating Oaks and dedicating Vandelay, there's going to be much more transportation connectivity throughout not just this commercial district, but also between the district and the other residential districts that abut it to the north and south. Additionally, the dedication of the right of way will allow for redevelopment of vacant properties that are currently owned by Marcus Bonda. And this would encourage economic vitality within the city in accordance with our adopted growth policy and also within with alignment with the goals of the Capital Home Mall Urban Renewal District Plan. There are some disadvantages which have already been touched on, and that is with respect to the Vandelay Avenue right of way, the fifty-foot width doesn't meet with our city engineering and design standards, and it doesn't satisfy complete streets or pro-act gender. Additionally, failure to meet those standards may have consequences for the provision of emergency services and raise other concerns about potential liability for the city long term. Additionally, the city's transportation systems department, public works department, and the fire marshal have all recommended that the right of way be dedicated at sixty feet as minimum and include all the required components of a local street in the interest of public health and safety. And include all the required components of a local street in the interest of public health and safety. So as far as some of the safety concerns that were raised by the department, they do include, and this is not a. The entire list, this is some of the more prepping issues. As I saw, there are instructions for emergency response, the streets are quickly too narrow for a fire department to effectively operate in the area and respond to an emergency. There are turning radio issues that impede access and block the streets, oncoming traffic. The site plan, which was included in the application and provided to you as part of the packet for this evening. Does show perpendicular parking, some of which is shown as being part of the right of way, some of which is shown as being part of the actual private, privately owned parcels. So there are long-term concerns over access and ownership and maintenance. Also with a fifty foot right of way, you cannot accommodate a parallel parking lane. I didn't actually intend to show that video unless needed. That was the video taken by Fire Marshal Lou Antnick. Just highlighting some of the issues with access for fire engines to this site. So with all of those considerations in mind. We'd like to move to recommend the acceptance of dedication of a sixty foot wide Vanderlei Avenue right of way. And a seventy foot wide Oak Street right of way to allow for construction of sidewalks and on-street parking within the public right of way. For property generally located south of Prospect Avenue, north of Eleventh Avenue and east of North Sanders Street in the city of Helena, Montana. And I'm happy to take questions you may have with me. I also would like to defer any questions pertaining to the engineering standards and fire code to the relevant directors. I believe Director Knopf is on the Zoom meeting tonight as well as Fire Chief Ken Wood.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Comments or questions from the commission?
Yep, Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So Ellie, I'm just looking at, I'm looking at page one ninety of our packet, which gives. A diagram of, I'm trying to, is this from the engineer? So I'm not sure. Where this document came from, but it's showing, it's showing Sanders Street as I believe it was designed. And just so I get a sense of the comparison, do you know what the width is of? Of Sanders Street, the right of way that we approved?
Um, Mayor and Commissioners, I actually would have to look that up, but I believe it's sixty feet off the top of my head, but I would defer to Director Knopf as I was. Not a party to that dedication project.
Director Knopf, are you available?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, I am looking that up as we speak. If you could give me a moment.
Mayor, if I may. I believe that that is on page one ninety-two and it's seventy feet.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, except for I also looked at that too, and that that's different than the design. So I understand that there's a seventy foot right of way, but what? It looks like the design of the street is narrower.
Commission, Director Knopf, can you?
The, the design is narrower. I'm going off the top of my head because I don't have the plans in front of me, but I believe they're either a ten-foot or eleven-foot lanes. With a median in between there to. When the original request was, the medians were there for, for traffic calming. So we do have Boulevard ends and sidewalks there on that seventy foot right of way. But as stated earlier by Ms. Ray, that there are some issues with those medians as well because. For fire department operations, that I can let the fire department explain more accurately. I hope that answered your question.
Commissioner Olafen, do you have any more?
I, I do, and maybe this is just, I know we'll take public comment, and so perhaps maybe the applicant can help with this too, but. Uh, Ms. Ray mentioned the perpendicular parking. And I'm just wondering, is that, is that design included in our packet? I might have, I might have missed it, but I, I was just trying to get a sense of where the parking was going to be located.
Mayor and Commissioners, yes, that information was provided in your packet. I apologize that I don't actually know what page it falls under for your packet for the evening, this evening. But it was included as part of the packet so that you could see it within the context of the whole application. And the parking, some of it on, let me see if I can pull up a copy of it actually for you, that might be easier.
I believe it's page one ninety as well.
Thank you. Give me a moment, I will scan through the materials provided to you, see if I can see it on the screen. Thank you for your patience. On page, trying to get it up on the screen for you now, so you can. See it contextually. Everybody see? The site plan now? With the relevant portion?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So as you can see. Just to the south and north on the sort of western portion of Vanderlei that's being considered for dedication this evening. There are some areas and they show up within the confines again of the actual buildable parcels. As being perpendicular parking spaces. Our understanding from the applicant is that these spaces are being sought. To actually help meet the parking requirements overall for the proposed developments. Speaking of building A, which is the southwest structure on this screen. And then Benefit, which would be the southeast building on the screen. So you can see that between them, they also have a large sway parking that I think. The intention, I would defer to Marcus Bond on this point, but I believe that there would be a cross parking agreement probably to have the different uses share some of these parking spaces. The parking spaces that are on Oak Street that are perpendicular are shown as being within the right of way. And there are some additional spaces too that are on the south side of Vanderlei, just north of the Benefit Building. Benefit parcel, I should say, that would be perpendicular, but within the parcels and not within the right of way. I don't know if that helps to answer your question though, Commissioner O'Loughlin?
No, that is very helpful. Thank you. I wasn't looking at the, the right way. So that's super helpful. And then just real quick, Ms. Ray. So have we already dedicated the right of way? So the other portion on the other side of Sanders of Vanderlei? Trying to remember now.
Mayor and Commissioners, yes, that was done in early twenty twenty.
And what was the width of that?
The width of that, as I recall, was fifty feet.
Okay, so that one is fifty feet.
Yes, that is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Fifth, is that standard, Ms. Ray?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no, that is not standard as far as the local street standard is concerned. And as a consequence, it doesn't provide all of the components that are required of a local street. And it has produced some issues with respect to access and response, emergency response.
Okay, and Oak Street, is that a? What I'm looking at here from the diagram? Is that a two-way street?
Mayor and Commissioners, yes, it would have a sufficient width to accommodate, yeah, north and south traffic.
And what's the, the width?
As proposed, that would be seventy feet for the right of way, Mr. Mayor.
Seventy feet? And is that standard?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, that actually exceeds the sixty foot required of a local street for the city's engineering standards, complete streets proag.
Okay. And I don't know if I'm looking at it right, but one side looks a little smaller than the others. Am I, is that accurate? The one that faces the parking?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I don't understand the question.
I'm saying, I don't know if that's, is it? You said it's two, the, the, the two-way street there, and I'm just asking, trying to find a. Because when I'm looking at it, the street that is next to the parking seems much smaller. Am I correct or wrong, whichever?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, I would actually have to defer to the applicant as far as ultimately what the width of that street will be for the actual driving lane. I, I don't know what the width is, but it, in theory, and this is just the site plan. But in theory, it should accommodate both travel lanes. My understanding, and it might be the case that Director Knopf has something further to add to that.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, I think the perception of that roadway is that. The, what would be the southbound lane is basically the through. Or they're, they're both through, but on the Jorgensen's Hotel side. That is actually proposed parking, like parallel parking lane. That's why it appears wider than the two lanes are. I believe, I think that's your question, Mayor.
Commissioner Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I believe Commissioner O'Loughlin alluded to this, but I. Want to be a little more specific. When the developer makes comment, I'd be interested to know the rationale behind that fifty-foot deviation. Thank you.
Commissioner Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is along the same lines, but I'm, I guess that's not clear to me. What part of the complete street is a developer considering leaving out? With having that fifty foot instead of this full sixty feet?
Mayor and Commissioner, I can speak to some of that and I would certainly welcome. Marcus Bond's response as well, or Greg Worth, who is the engineer that has worked on this proposal as well. As you can maybe glean from what's shown here in the site plan. Part of what's being debated from, not just the fact that they're not looking to provide parallel on-street parking. Instead they've got the perpendicular shown, but you, you maybe can tell that there are some areas. Where there are sidewalks shown, but the sidewalks are actually within the parcels themselves and not within the right of way. So those are, those are two big items right there. And there are some additional, I think, differences from the standards as well. But I have to look back at the transect myself to recall.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mayor, for Ms. Ray or Mr. Knopf, will there be any parallel parking? On Vanderlei as proposed in this fifty-foot right of way?
Mayor and Commissioner, that's not what was proposed by the developer in this instance. They are only proposing the couple days of perpendicular parking spaces that you see in the site plan.
So for those portions of Vanderlei that don't have the perpendicular parking and don't have a drive approach. It looks like there's some, will those, would those just be proposed to be essentially yellow, yellow curved, meaning no, no cars may park here?
Mayor and Commissioner, I'll defer to Director Knopf and Chief Wood to that point, but my understanding is that in some cases, they wouldn't necessarily even just be painted yellow or possibly red for emergency response. But I will again defer to the subject matter experts on that point.
And who, who may that be?
I, I would, I would talk to Director Knopf, defer to him or to Chief Wood.
You know, I, I would be honest here, this thing is as clear as mud. I am totally lost. I don't understand what's going on here and. I don't know, I would, I would talk to. Mr. Jordan to see how best we can come back to this issue because. There's way too, 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 too much unknown. I don't understand it. Maybe I have to go look at this scene. Any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, yeah, a couple more follow-ups on those questions, Mr. Mayor, so.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Currently on the fifty-foot Vanderlei that was accepted previously, is there parallel parking on either or both sides of Vanderlei on that portion?
Mayor and Commissioner, there are no parallel parking spaces whatsoever on that already dedicated portion of Vanderlei.
Do we know what the drivable width of that portion of Vanderlei with no parking? And the drivable portion of Vanderlei here on this proposed amended plat would be. Again, accepting the, the perpendicular spaces since they don't appear to extend out onto the proposed drivable space?
Mayor and Commissioner, I will defer to Director Knopf on that point.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, the Vanderlei West is a twenty-foot pavement section. And what they're, I believe, on their fifty-foot right of way proposals, that's all they're proposing for. The extension of Vanderlei is, is twenty feet drivable surface.
And that would be twenty feet drivable surface with no available parallel parking spaces. So in theory, as long as someone's not illegally parking, it would always be a, a twenty-foot drivable surface.
And Commissioner Nurse, that's correct.
And then I know it's in the packet, I apologize, and maybe Chief Wood can clarify. I think there was a comment from the fire department regarding a twenty-foot driving spaces. Is that right?
Yeah.
Mayor, Commission, yes, that is correct. The fire department needs a twenty-foot clear path for emergency vehicles to respond. To an incident.
May I ask a clarifying question, Mayor?
Please.
Chief Wood. I believe Commissioner Holliday pointed out that, that it would be twenty feet. With that twenty feet, would there be any? What would happen in the event there was someone illegally parked? Just is there an opportunity for blocking or what would, what would be the impact of that twenty feet? First and then second, I think. Commissioner O'Loughlin pointed out the Sanders. And I, I know you had used one of your trucks to come up Sanders. Can you describe the distance? On that street, I know that transportation Director Knopf is, is researching the width of Sanders. So that we can get some spatial detail. But I wanted to make sure I understood, you know, how wide is it between the medians compared to the middle where both Vanderlei? Comes across Sanders and then at the curbs where they're exiting onto Eleventh or exiting onto or entering onto. Thank you.
Yes, so Mayor, Commission, City Manager, thank you for asking the question. Because that is very, a very important point. Is that twenty feet? In order to achieve that, we look for a, and, and I would ask the Fire Marshal Lou Atnick to step in if I miss. If I misspeak here, but thirty-six foot back to curb, back to curb. And as you know, in Montana, we have snow, you have illegal parking. And as you know, in Montana, we have snow, um, you have illegal parking, and all those things we have to take into account when responding. Uh, people illegal park all the time. There is snow that has to be removed, and all these things add up. And, and at best, slow our response. And there's a video um that Ellie actually popped up there for a second that shows um the difficulty in entering um Sanders and these streets. Yeah, there it is. Um, if you have traffic, and we were out there the other day talking with the developers, if, if you have, we watched the traffic um coming in and out of there, and if there is one vehicle parked there waiting to get out in the traffic, it's virtually impossible for us to get an engine in. And we respond quite routinely with engines, not just for fire calls, but for other emergencies, motor vehicle accidents, even medical calls. Because it allows us to respond to more than two medical calls at a time, so that's a very uh important part of our response model is to be able to respond, and these streets, as they are right now, um severely hinder even a rescue or ambulance from getting into these streets and into the parking lot, for example, at Starbucks. Um, it is a real concern um for the fire department in our response.
Do you, uh, just a clarifier, do you have the widths? At the entrance there, I see the truck coming in off Prospect. Do you have the entrance widths or just the Fire Marshal for that, as well as the area between the medians on either side?
I do not. I would have to um defer to uh Director Knopki, possibly might have those, or um Ellie, but I don't have the, the measurements right there at that opening.
Okay, um, uh, uh, Chief Wood or Director Knopki or whomever. After that, you, you, I know your hands been up for a bit, now Commissioner Dean, you hit the floor. Does that street meet engineering standards? Any member of the team can answer the question.
As I understand it, no, it does not. Director Knopki would be the individual, but it was signed off on as I understand it.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, it does not meet engineering standards. It was allowed to come in at the reduced fifty-foot year and a half ago, I believe, when the, um, or a year ago when the plans were submitted. The reason being that it was going to be a short section of roadway that would only be this fifty-foot right-of-way because the, at, at that time, the proposed development there on the um east side was going to be more of a, I guess, a, a private um development where the road, the right-of-way wouldn't go through there, so um that was, that was done some time ago under a previous city manager.
The event, are you saying, I'm sorry, can I ask a mayor?
No, we'll go to Commissioner Dean first.
Okay.
She's been up for a bit. Commissioner Dean?
Um, if it's helpful to wait, I can wait, but my question was just in term, and this would be for probably Director Knopki to um or the city manager. Uh, back to the, mine was back to the sidewalks on Vandalay, so if the sidewalks are not in the city right-of-way, are, are they required to meet our, our city ordinance standards in terms of, you know, not just snow removal, but um ADA and um, you know, slip, trip, and fall and the rest if it's not within the right-of-way?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, um, so sidewalks on private property fall under a different title under the ADA. Um, so they are technically not, um, if, if we were to receive a complaint that they weren't shoveling their sidewalks, roadway code enforcement would try to contact the property owner and, you know, and request, but there's um nothing that we could do that binds them to the right-of-way rules that the city has established.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Halliday?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, um, Mr. Knop, you just, just looking at the local road transect, um, I'm seeing a thirty-foot paved section normally proposed with, appears a six, six-foot parking lane on each side and two nine-foot travel lanes in the middle, and I, I'm just trying to reconcile that engineering standard with the twenty-foot minimum that we are being told we have to have for a fire truck to drive through, right? Because we have to assume that there's going to be a car parked on each side and that we have eighteen-footed space in the middle, so do we have a problem with our current local road engineering standard according to what we're being told this evening?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, um, as far as the history of how we got to the nine-foot, I would have to defer to uh Director Leland uh as he was um more a part of those conversations uh before my time at the city. But as in your reference, yes, we have a conflict where our standard says not two nine-foot lanes, which equals the eighteen feet, which does not equal the twenty feet that is required by a fire code. But we are currently revising those standards to reflect the twenty feet.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, because we're being asked to accept a right-of-way dedication of sixty feet tonight so that the, the applicant can build exactly what we see as this local road, or at least that's the transect we've been shown. But we're also being told that that transect doesn't meet our current needs as a fire department, right?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, we, we proposed a modified section to the local roads until the re-engineering standards can be revised, which would be a thirty-two-foot um asphalt section, which would give us the two uh six-foot parking lanes and the twenty feet uh, the two ten-foot travel lanes to meet fire code.
So, so maybe a process, so does it then have to be a sixty-two-foot right-of-way dedication, or are we losing two feet someplace else on our complete street?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, there, there's reserved a foot on the outside of the right-of-way um on each side, but we also have the ability to that's where we took the, 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 the distance from, but there's also, you know, the ability to squeeze out some more feet um uh in the boulevard area.
So, maybe a process question on all of this, um, because I don't blame the mayor for being relatively confused. The, the applicant has submitted an amended plat, um, which I understand would be this Vandalay extension, because I remember Vandalay not existing on this eastern portion previously, and has proposed for this plat a, a fifty-foot right-of-way dedication, and we're being asked tonight to accept this amended plat with a fifty-foot right-of-way designation, but, or a sixty-foot right-of-way designation, but what, what plat are we accepting? Then, because they've, they've done all these pretty pictures and engineering stuff designed for a fifty foot, so what, what is the plat we're accepting at sixty, or are we just essentially drawing it for them if we accept it at a sixty tonight?
Mayor, if I may, um, the recommendation from staff is different from what is being proposed by the engineer. Uh, uh, like I said, it shares in the recommended motion, the motion moves to accept the dedication at sixty feet at uh Vandalay and seventy at Oaks. Those are two widths this design has consistently been requested at. Uh, the, the design itself now is being proposed and shown here by the uh engineer, and in the application itself and dedication process, and not meeting those expectations or those standards.
I, I appreciate that I can sense that there is a clear divide between the staff and the applicant here. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is the applicant owns this land and is standing before us as someone saying, I want to dedicate a certain amount of land to your city, and what I want to dedicate is a fifty-foot right-of-way. And what we're countering with is no, we're accepting your sixty-foot designation, and I guess I don't understand them to be offering that this evening. And so I'm, I'm, I'm asking as a matter of process, how we can accept a ten-foot wider right-of-way that they're not willing to give, right? Like, if, if we said we want ten more feet, they can say then we're no longer, we're withdrawing our amended plat, and we'll go back to design Vandalay as a private street, right? You guys get
Right.
no sidewalks, no parking, no snow removal, because we're going to do it as a private drive, and you get nothing as a city. You'll get, you'll get the garbage that people provide as private streets, because we couldn't have a, a discussion about streets. So I'm just trying to figure out, can we actually, and this is maybe a question for Sharon or the city attorney, can we actually accept a sixty-foot dedication tonight, which isn't being proposed to us by the applicant?
Uh, hmm, Mayor, if I may, Commissioners, the, that is exactly the conversation we had with the developer. And, and that the request is that they deviate from the engineering standards, which, when they brought in their amended plat request, we have stuck to. Uh, I understand that it is private property, and absolutely, they can call them private, private uh roads and expect no snow removal. Ultimately, the plan, when it was proposed, as far as the development, was totally um in a different light. As I understand, um, the potential for ambulance, because it's a potential uh surgery center, is a different outcome, and the conversation is different even from what was originally described as being potential uses on the property. So all of those do come into consideration. So your point is absolutely spot-on in that the city does not have an obligation to take the right-of-way, and it does not have an obligation to provide services into those areas.
Okay.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
I see Mr. Worth hand is up. Let's hear from him, uh, Commissioner.
We, it's, we're not, it's not clear what we're being asked to do is legal, and I just want to hear the city attorney tell us it is.
Okay, come, uh, 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 Ms. Alshok, what do you have to say?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, and uh the city attorney, Joden, absolutely. Um, the expectation on any plat, and I believe anyone who is dedicating property over, if the city is going to be providing service, the expectation is that it meet the, the needs of the community to provide that service. So I can't say um as to its specifics as to it being legal, as I understand it, the engineering standards are accepted as part of the city code and the adoption and citation. So uh I would though defer to city attorney Jod, city attorney Joden as to whether or not we can, and on dedication with expectation of future service, ask.
City Attorney Jordan?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, the, I believe, I don't have any concerns with the city asking for sixty feet right-of-way. I'd also point out that there are new lots being created out of the multiple lots there. And city code does say new lots being created have to be accessed by a city standard street. Um, private drives are usually internal to the lots, so I guess if that's, if the, the applicant is going to withdraw his application and seek to do a private drive to access those lots, we're going to have to analyze that uh under that part of the amended plat as well, which may or may not come before the commission.
Okay, Commissioner Halliday?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I get that we can ask for sixty, right? Because sixty is our standard. Normally, someone would come into us and we'd say, we want a sixty. What I'm trying to understand is the motion in front of us tonight, the recommendation from staff is to accept a sixty-foot dedication, right? Not to reject the applicant's amended plat proposal of fifty, which would make sense to me, because from everything I'm understanding from staff, staff is recommending, don't accept this. I'm just trying to tease out whether we can accept their, their plat, which is fifty feet, but at sixty, and just say, thanks for the extra ten feet, and it's a done deal. Does that, does that make sense? I just don't understand procedurally how this works.
Mr. June?
Yeah, Mayor, Commissioner Halliday, um, maybe I would agree, let's see what the applicant has to, to say about the, the city's proposal, or at least staff's proposed motion. May, maybe it's a distinction without a difference at this point.
Okay.
Of course, the, the commission can still make its own motion and choose to reject the acceptance, and we would restart this and bring it back.
Let's hear from the applicant. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you raise the applicant, please? Go ahead, Mr. Worth.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners again. Greg Worth, on behalf of D and M Development with Staley Engineering at thirty-five, Thirty Centennial Drive, and again, I'd like to thank uh Ms. Ellie Ray for preparing the information. Um, just some background to answer some of the questions uh that were, that have been brought up. Sandra Street was dedicated last year, uh, seventy feet wide. Oak Street is also proposed to be dedicated as seventy feet wide, and the reason for seventy feet is because Sandra Street and Oak Street immediately north and south of this project have all been platted at seventy feet wide. So all the north-south streets are platted at seventy feet wide, so it's for consistency. That's the reasoning behind the seventy-foot width. That is wider than what is needed for a local street. Um, but it, for consistency, um, it, it, it doesn't make logical sense to have um, you know, one block that's ten-foot narrower than the others. So that's the reasoning behind the, the seventy-foot street. All streets are proposed to have uh ten-foot drive lanes. Um, Oak Street has a parallel parking along uh Jorgensen's. Um, Vandalay will have, is proposed to have two ten-foot travel lanes. Um, Sandra Street is designed with the two ten-foot travel lanes with also, also with the curb bulbouts and the, the medians. Uh, Sandra Street and Vandalay to the west were dedicated last year, in your twenty-twenty. Um, Vandalay is proposed at fifty-foot wide uh to avoid excess right-of-way and allow larger lot development areas. Um, larger lot error, areas allow for zoning and parking compliance while facilitating maximal taxable advantages. Um, in response to the city comments, we will revise the right-of-way dedication um to include, to widen the right-of-way where the, the perpendicular parking is shown. Um, and that will look roughly include about the additional fifteen feet on each side, so we'll have an irregular-shaped right-of-way. Is what we're proposing. Um, the engineering standards do allow deviations from the complete street component matrix. That's what we're requesting. Engineering standards recommends new development. Consider traffic calming measures for new developments and must be used for all local and collector streets. Uh, engineering standards provided numerous recommendations for traffic calming. The ones that we are including here for proposal are, is, the main was a shared parking zone to include the perpendicular parking, uh, narrow streets, boulevards, uh, street trees, curb bulbouts, and horizontal deflection. Um, also, some of the basis on what's being proposed is reviewing the growth policy and the Capitol Hill Mall urban renewal plan. Um, those, both those plans were publicly vetted and approved by the commission. Um, you know, to cite some excerpts from the growth policy, the site is recommended as a neighborhood center to optimize reinvestment. A key element is a sense of place by enabling intense mixed development and encouraging concentration of activity in identity-rich districts. Centers will provide a denser development pattern to achieve a unified, functional, efficient, and aesthetically appealing physical setting, providing opportunities for easy connections, public transportation, and walkability. Transportation systems to minimize the amount of available land used for travel and parking purposes. Transportation objectives to support compact land use patterns, highlight and support neighborhood centers. Provide transportation corridors that emphasize neighborhood centers as points of community importance and focus. Further, reviewing the Capitol Hill Mall urban renewal plan, who was approved last year. Um, streetscape improvements was the most frequent comment. Streetscape included reducing right-of-ways, adding parking strips, sidewalks, bulbouts, green boulevards, trees. The goal to The goal to facilitate private sector development and use U R D funds for the extension of Vandalay through the site. Um, work with the developer of the former mall site to achieve objectives in the growth policy for a neighborhood center. Promote higher densities and comp- compact land use patterns to allow mixed development and aesthetically appealing physical setting. Allow taller mixed development to increase residential and commercial opportunities while using services and infrastructure more efficiently. Um, additionally, the city is considering creation of an overlay zoning district with heightened development standards resulting from the growth policy and U R D plan for streetscape improvements, connectivity, promote denser infill and redevelopment opportunities. The traffic calming measures are consistent with the approved plans to create a neighborhood center and establish a sense of place and encourage gathering. Um, the desire for the neighborhood center according to plans huh being a non-standard development uh design concept is for a great, great northern town center type neighborhood center. Um, you know, utilizing city standard streets, um, you know, less allowances are allowed. The neighborhood center will be a, you know, a Custer Avenue um standard retail-type center. Um, you know, I want to point out there, there is no intent to circumvent any regulations or compromise on public safety or emergency vehicle access. Design is to accommodate emergency vehicle access, which is a very low likelihood occurrence and not diminish everyday use. Uh, design accommodates frequent service and delivery vehicles. Large unused unused streets will severely compromise the livability and sense of place for the neighbor, desired neighborhood center. Um, reviewing uh emergency access, uh as Commissioner Logan pointed out earlier in the evening and uh, Miss Rachel Harlow Show, you know, there is a consideration in modern building codes. Um, the buildings will be built to modern building codes with fire-rated materials and sprinkler systems. So those are considerations on uh provisions for emergency access. Um, on this site specifically, the the presence of Prospect Avenue and Eleventh Avenue are very large physical streets that that dominate the setting. The desire is to avoid another large street um according to the public comment and the comments received and the growth policy and the U R D plan. The reduction in physical size of Vandalay Avenue achieves the maximal taxable values in district by maximizing the developable area uh and taxable areas. So what we'd request is the dedication approval of the Oak Street right-of-way at seventy feet wide. Um, and the dedication of Vandalay Avenue at fifty feet wide with the widening fifteen feet on each side to accommodate the areas where the shared parking, um, the perpendicular parking is proposed. Um, at this time, the full extent of the development is not known. Um, commonly referred as the benefit site is um unknown at this time. Um, and what we propose is that we dedicate this as fifty feet wide and we will have an amended plat in the future to provide any widened, the fifteen feet on each side to allow for the perpendicular in the future. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions and uh Mr. Marcus Bond with D and M Development is also in attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Worth. One question for me. Is there a reason why you can't go back to the drawing board and bring it back for the dedication of sixty feet?
There is any reason why we can't. Um, it's not preferable from the developer's perspective. Um, the reason we're showing the perpendicular parking is for that town center type feel to integrate the parking um into the streetscape um to try and invite more parking. You know, one consideration is um the par- parallel parking is is not very efficient, especially in a commercial area um like this. Uh, example is Sandra Street uh up by Lowe's. Um, we, as part of the Trinity Center Development, that street was, the on-street parking was removed because it was underutilized and it was more efficient to use that space as a center turn lane. Um, so um, the desire from the development perspective is to have a perpendicular shared parking in lieu of parallel parking. That's the part of the deviation request we're asking for.
Any other comments from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner. Look, I mean Commissioner Halliday.
Thanks. Maybe for um, I have a couple of questions after all of that, but maybe for Mr. Knopki. If if we accept the applicant's offer of sixty feet, which I don't understand them to be offering, but let's say we say sixty and they go with it. Are we still proposing no parking on either side of Vandalay?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, if we went with a city, local city standard street, there would be parallel parking on both sides. With
Got just. So we would be telling them, get rid of the perpendicular and just go with parallel parking.
Um, Mayor and Commissioners, that's how our engineering standards are laid out as parallel parking and um do not include the provisions without commission approval for angled parking.
So maybe a a question from Mr. Worth then. Um, you know, our recommendation tonight is that we accept the the developer's dedication of sixty feet. And I've I've been a little confused if you take it from my questions without how we can accept something that we haven't been offered. Um, i- is the developer offering the sixty-foot right-of-way this evening?
Mr. Worth?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner Halliday. The developer is not offering a sixty-foot right-of-way this evening.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, just before I, I won't answer, ask another question, but I'll just reiterate again. I I don't think we can take staff's recommendation this evening. Um, if if the applicant is not offering it, um, I think we can have those discussions about either accepting what's being offered or suggestions that you've had, Mr. Mayor, but um I don't know how we could actually accept something. Um, this is a plat, this is has legal effect, and I don't know how we can just say, we accept your fifty-foot plat and we're just going to like draw an extra ten-foot line down the middle of it, but that doesn't make any sense to me. And I, given that the applicant's not offering it and I have a burden explanation of how we can do that. Um, I'm just going to say that I I don't think we can take the recommended motion this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dean?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I know most of the conversation here has been about the parking, but the thing that I uh keep going back to that I think I'm most concerned about is the sidewalk issue. Um, we are trying to clean up, you know, I would say what were probably bad decisions, you know, fifty years ago in terms of sidewalks. And I'd hate to put another commission in the same position fifty years from now. Um, and hope that folks just follow recommendations. So I'll just voice it, my, I'm pretty concerned about the sidewalk piece on Vandalay as proposed right now. Um, and I hope that's something maybe the developer would could take into consideration how to um, I guess amend things to alleviate those concerns. Um, I'm sure everyone has the best of intentions, but as we know, um, you know, it's, you know, it might not be feasible for someone fifty years from now to fix a sidewalk. And we're, you know, we run into the same issues that we're running into right now in fixing decades-old sidewalks or or non-existent sidewalks.
Thank you. Commissioner Olafman?
Yeah, that, so I just, on the sidewalks, I guess maybe um, Mr. Worth, just just so I'm clear on the sidewalks. The plan is to develop sidewalks along Vandalay. I I understand there's a question of whether or not they're on private property, but they are. Is the, is the applicant proposing to develop sidewalks throughout the whole space?
Mr. Worth? When um, thank you and Commissioner Dean, thank you for asking the question so I can further clarify. When I say the additional fifteen-foot right-of-way is proposed, that would include the sidewalks to include all sidewalks within the right-of-way. So it would include the parking and the sidewalks, the perpendicular parking, that would be in that additional fifteen feet. In the areas where the perpendicular parking does not occur, we would have a minimum the fifty-foot right-of-way, which would include the sidewalk within the right-of-way and the two ten-foot travel lane. So with our revised proposal, all sidewalk within Vandalay will be within, is proposed to be within right-of-way.
Okay, um, and then Mayor, my original question, I I think probably for Mr. Worth. Um, so it was helpful when you talked about the the Great Northern Town Center, just as sort of a, an example of how this has looked. And I'm just wondering if you can expand upon that, the extent to which you sort of see that. What are the similarities of what you, of what you all are envisioning here? Or what are the differences potentially as well as far as the width and the parking situation? Like, how how similar is Great Northern compared to what, what the applicant is envisioning here?
Mr. Worth?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Olafman. Um, as far as specifics, I don't have, you know, dimensions of what the streets are in um in the Great Northern Town Center. I do know the Great Northern Town Center, they use angled parking, similar to uh Park Avenue by Park Avenue Bakery and the brewery. You know, that functions very well. Um, other municipalities are using the angled parking here too. We elected not to use the angled parking here just because we suspect that um, you know, the difficulty with the angle parking is you're you're forcing a direction upon exit. And I see based on these type of use, some of the occupants, uh, you know, vehicle users may want to go west or east and trying to avoid that conflict movement that which may occur on site. Um, the other advantage with perpendicular parking is that it it's more efficient for space. Um, if we went to angled parking, we would probably lose two to three parking spaces per parking bank just because of the angled nature rather than being uh perpendicular. Um, it's just, you know, anytime you introduce angles, you lose space efficiency. Um, and in this case, um, we were trying to meet the parking codes. We don't, we're trying not to use too many parking deviations. Um, um, you know, most as far as the Opportunity Bank site, they know how many parking spaces they need. They know how many occupants they want in the building. So based on past experience, they know what type of parking they want. And it and it's about, it's it's about the minimum parking requirements. So we're not trying to use too many reductions on the Opportunity Bank site, the the building A site. Um, you know, some of those will be condos, which the parking requirement is, you know, one space per dwelling unit. Um, we just know that there's going to be instances where a dwelling unit is going to have more than one, need more than one parking space. So we, you know, prefer not to, in this case, you know, not just meet the minimums. We want to provide, good design is providing a reasonable amount of parking as well too. Um, so, you know, we're not trying to maximize the parking because we want to introduce green space. And we also want to maximize uh building area for taxable values, but we don't want to skimp on parking either. Especially in this case, because we don't have on-street parking available on Eleventh or Prospect. You know, so there's limited opportunities for overflow parking within the site due to, you know, Prospect and Eleventh.
Thank you. At this time, I will enter in public comments.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, first up online with their hand raised, I have an individual listed as Danny G. I would ask that individual to list their full name prior to giving comment.
Mayor Collins and Commissioners, this is Danny Greby with LPW Architects at fifteen Fifth Street South in Great Falls. Speaking in the interest of benefits, we would like to see you vote in favor of the proposal for the seventy-foot Oak Street right-of-way and the fifty-foot Vandalay Avenue right-of-way. These additional stalls contribute to the square footage of the building per the city code ratios of square footage to required parking to fully utilize the site that they own in accordance with the district's standards. This proposal also allows more views and accessibility to green spaces, the landscaping and of the built environment that parallel parking and a larger right-of-way would reduce. As well, it is in benefits' best interest to properly maintain sidewalks for their patients and guests. We ask you to reject the recommended motion and instead motion for the fifty-foot right-of-way request for Vandalay Avenue and the seventy-foot right-of-way for Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
Um, Mr. Mayor, yes. Next, I have uh Marcus Bonda.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Mark
Evening.
E S P O N D A at Seven Crossfire Drive in Clancy. Um, you know, I would, I would say first, I appreciate and respect um the city staff and and what they're tasked with in regard to development and infrastructure. Um, I think there's a good place for uniformity and standards in in many situations in the community. Um, that said, I think this mall development is a case for um some deviations from those standards. You know, first of all, we would have half of a commercial development with one type of street and another half of a development with a different type of street. Um, you know, I I I think that we've heard overwhelmingly from um members of the 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 public in the community. Um, we've heard from, you know, the city commission in the past about um urban renewal and more density and um neighborhood-type areas. You know, what what we're proposing is very similar to what's in the Great Northern, except for it has uh boulevards instead of, you know, the sidewalk right against the building that would have, you know, um boulevards and sidewalks. Um, I I, I think what the city staff is recommending is a residential street in the middle of a commercial development. Um, when you look at what we're proposing, we're proposing a twenty-foot unobstructed drive lane with no parking on either side. What the city is proposing is eighteen feet with cars parked parallel on each side of the street. Um, and I guess, uh, I don't know if this is a a statement or a question, but I I don't understand how a twenty-foot unobstructed drive aisle with, um, you know, i- is better than a eighteen-foot drive aisle with cars parked on both sides of it. I I I guess it just doesn't make sense to me that that the city would recommend something that doesn't meet their city standard for emergency vehicles. Um, like Mr. Knopki said earlier, eighteen feet does not meet their standard for what they're trying to accomplish and our twenty feet does.
Are you done, sir?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public, uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no other hands raised. I have no written public comment online and there is no one in chambers to make public comment on this item.
Commissioner Dean?
Mr. Mayor, I had a a question. So I know that the, and I don't know if staff has this off-hand right now, but it, the Great Northern's been noted many times tonight. And I'm wondering, um, if we know what the distance of the right-of-way within the Great Northern is. Um, and I guess I would also be curious. Um, I work down there and so I am walking around it all the time. And I know lots of people park um illegally all over uh there where they're not supposed to be parking, where there isn't um on-street parking um like in front of the UPS boxes and um the rest. But I'm just trying to get a frame of references to, you know, what this actually looks like. And so I'm wondering if anyone knows what the the right-of-way distance is within the Great Northern.
I don't.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners? Uh, it varies on fourteenth, the right-of-way um is about is about thirty-one feet. But that right-of-way width is only the roadway. The parking is behind the right-of-way and totally off right-of-way, as is the sidewalks in most areas. The um roadway going that goes down to the movie theater right-of-way width is about twenty-four and a half feet. But again, um, that's just drivable lanes. The parking and sidewalks are behind that right-of-way width.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Knopki. Now, um, there is much to discuss about this topic. And I want to propose, we table this. And when we have the information or the adjustments, we can get back to it. What say it to you, Commission?
So I do, you know, I do have one
So I do, you know, I do have one question on that, Mr. Mayor, which is do we, does, and maybe it's for the manager, but does there need to be any direction given one way or the other about, even if we're going to table it? You know, the commission's appetite between 50 and 60 feet because judging by the respective positions that were presented by the applicant this evening and the city staff, it's sort of hard to to bridge that gap right now. And I heard a little bit from the applicant indicating a willingness to dedicate the 15 feet that would be needed in order to ensure the sidewalks near the perpendicular parking would be public, right, to to accommodate some commission questions, but I've I've heard some pretty strong opinions from our staff. And I just can't tell if we're sending these two groups back into a room to butt heads because we can't come up with a a call.
Do we have any other comments from the commissioner on our proposal?
Mr. Mayor? Um, I would, I I think I'd be in favor of tabling one thing. I know if they're going to go back and you know, recommend or or, you know, redo this to include that 15 feet. I think that's fine. I guess now I'm you know, well, one, I'm concerned that we don't, the sidewalks and boulevards aren't in the right-of-way of the Great Northern, but my other thing too is now that I understand that the Great Northern right-of-way is larger than this the street piece that they're proposing here, would that be Director Knopki, is that accurate? Since they're proposing 20 and the this shortest distance you noted was 24 and a half?
Um, so the travel lanes, yes, are wider than what they're proposing. But the right-of-way width, for whatever reason, is a little different than in the Great Northern because it doesn't include the those other amenities like sidewalks and parking. So the right-of-way width is narrower, but the drivable surface is wider. Sorry to make that more complicated.
No, no, that's a super helpful because I guess that's just, I think that it's I I I don't think they're comparable then.
I think we should focus on this issue right now because we're far, time is far spent and we still have our agenda to to move forward on. So I know that the 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 team suggested 60-foot and the applicant is saying no. So I think we should vote on whether we accept this 60-foot or not, because if they're saying that they don't accept it, let's just vote on it, yea, nay, and move forward with whatever else we have to do instead of just beating this horse. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion. No motion. Damn. Okay. I'm not sure what to do from here then.
Mayor, if I could, I I would recommend that the commission consider a motion to table, since the applicant has uh, as I understood it, proposed something somewhat new. We could run that back through the normal process, give staff a chance to review that and bring that, bring that specific proposal back to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. That's what I was suggesting initially, but I didn't hear any. Anyway, we'll go back. I'll entertain a motion to table this discussion for future agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to table item 11E for a future agenda.
Any second. What's that?
Second.
It's been moved in second and any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Holliday. Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion to table carries five to zero.
Okay. 12th offer, consider a resolution providing for the annual tax levy emails for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and in July 30, 2022, Manager Hollashaw.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is the public hearing on the consideration of the resolution for the annual tax levy and mills for the fiscal year and I have both the Finance Team Director Sheila Danielson as well as Budget Officer Christopher Cooley, who are available for presentation. Also want to note that Mr. Cooley has taken a recent promotion and this will probably be his last time in providing this update to you all as he will be moving up in our organization and working as a deputy director for our transportation team. So Director Danielson.
Thank you, City Manager Hollashaw, Mayor Commission, for this agenda item. I am going to pass this on to Budget Officer Christopher Cooley.
Mr. Cooley?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's been a while. I will try to move through this as quickly as I can, so let stop me at any point if you need some more information, so. Tonight, we're talking about the mill levy, a similar presentation to what I gave you guys last year. I hope that it seems familiar. So tonight, the requirement of MCA 7-6-4036, we have to set the tax levy by a certain date or within 30 calendar days of receiving our certain, our certified taxable values. We receive them dated August 3, which would make September 2 the 30-day mark, the later of those being September 9, so it just seemed to coincide pretty well with today's date. Our maximum allowable general levy for tax year 21 fiscal year 22 is $9,399,093. That equates to a general levy in mills of 121.13. Total mills citywide, 168.87, so that would include the fire levy, the health insurance levy, the general obligation bond levy. And your recommended motion, when we're done here, would be move to approve a resolution providing for the annual tax levy and mills for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and in June 30, 2022. So our general levy breakdown, 121.13. The, it would include the railroad TIF, the downtown TIF and the newly created Capital Mall TIF District. Those amounts are contained within the 121.13. Last year's general levy was 124.28, so we're going down. The group health levy, 28.66, the geo debt levy, 7.1 and the fire department supplemental, 11.98, for a total of my closed captions getting in my way, but I think it's 5.93 a reduction versus last year. And so why are we going down in mills? Again, I'll move through this as quickly as I can. So the two factors that affect our mill levy calculation are the amount of taxable value in the levying district and the maximum allowable amount to be levied, which is determined from the Department of Revenue by taking the prior year amount and adjusting for inflation. The general idea here is that if our taxable value is growing faster than inflation, then we need less mills to generate the same amount of revenue as the prior year plus our inflation. So the example below, again, if we were allowed $500 last year on a $5,000 base, we would need 100 mills, $100 per $1,000 of taxable value. The, if we take an inflationary rate of 2%, our inflation factor of 1%, which by law is one-half of the inflation rate, our allowable amount would be $505 this next year, which is the 500 from prior year plus our inflation. Now, if our taxable value had grown to 7,500 in that time, you can see it would only need 67.33 mills to generate that $505. So that is our relationship between taxable value and inflation and the effect on mills. Next year is sort of the breakdown and you'll find these numbers on the the levy calculation sheet that was in your packet with the agenda. 9,111,045 was the prior year allowable amount and inflationary factor of 0.93%, which is set by the the Department of Revenue. That's that three-year one-half average. Total taxable value for $78,423,416. They adjust that to exclude new growth and the tax or the TIF increment amounts. So that gets us to 75, 913, 865. So that translates to a taxable value per mill, $75,913 and roughly 87 cents. Our current year allowable amount before the new growth in the TIF districts, the 9,195,778, which gives us our mill calculation. You take that number divided by the value per mill equals 121.13 mills. And then that number is then applied to the new growth in the TIF taxable value increments to get to that 9,399,093 that we saw in the beginning. This is the breakdown of all mill levies for both the city and the county. The ones highlighted in blue here are the ones that are relevant to city properties. So you have our our main one, 161.77, and then the geo bond levy is broken out separately. Those two would be the 168. The county mills, if you are inside city limits, is 191.69. That also went down. I believe theirs was 193-point-something last year as well. And then down below here under the village by school district, that is the school district that's relevant to city limits. You can see the schools are charging 430.24 for a total of 790.8. That's what you will be paying in number of mills if you live in city limits altogether. And if you remember, last year was, I believe, 818.43. So we've gone down considerably from last year. And again, that's that relationship between taxable value and the inflation rate. Here is a sort of an example, a quick example of a $300,000 market value home, which I think hopefully we can all agree is somewhere in the range of what's out there right now. The total tax on that would be $3,202. And you get those by going through and taking your market value by the taxable rate, which is actually set by statute at 1.35% gives you a taxable value of just over $4,000. You take your mill equivalent, which is just dividing by 1,000, gives you $4.05 per mill times the 790.8 mills you'll pay as a city resident for the 300 or $3,202.74. Here's the breakdown of your market value versus how much you're paying in property tax. So just over 1% of market value is making up property tax of your property. And then when you see the split between where those taxes go, you can see the city makes up just over 21%. The county little over 23.5% and the school districts make up over 55% of where the tax dollars go. And then this is just our five-year history. And again, you can see in yellow, the highlighted part is our current year breakdown. Again, going into 430.24 for the schools, 168.87 for the city, 191.69 for the county for a total of 790.8. And like I said, last year was 818.43. And so the best way to think about that number is that you're, as a city resident, you're going to pay $790.80 for every $1,000 of your taxable value. And that's it.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Well, oh, go ahead.
I'm going to guess that Commissioner O'Loughlin was going to say something similar to me, so go ahead. I was just going to say you did a very good job of explaining that and that the legislature should take note. Not that we'd want to lose you and congratulations on your promotion, but that was an excellent job of explaining something that confuses most people.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
No, I would just say, as always, thank you for the great presentation and I would love the slides, please, so I can take a look more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? No comments. Any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no hands raised online. I have no written public comment and no one in chambers to make a comment on this item.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve a resolution providing for the annual tax levy and mills for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and ending in June 30, 2022.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Holliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
At this time, I want to apologize to the Health and Citizens Council. I skipped them. Do we have a representative still present? Ms. Wilson, I apologize. Please, you have the floor.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. It's a pleasure to be here. I was listening intently, but I don't have an agenda in front of me, so I wasn't sure when this was going to come up. But I do have a brief report is that we approved a composting recommendation for the commission. And the new members took their oath of office. I was one of them. I think there was like five or six others. And then we learned from Jake Garson, the City Public Information Officer, about how the city is attempting to communicate with the citizens. And they stressed the Be Heard Helena website and My Helena app as two avenues that they're trying to build upon. And then we also discussed the possibility of looking into affordable housing because it seems to be a really big issue now. And even more so since some people will be displaced because of the fire that happened last night. So that's the report. I wanted to keep it short and sweet since it's getting late. And thank you for letting me join in.
Thank you, and my apologies again.
It's understandable. Thank you.
Okay, consider a resolution adopting final budget, budget authority and appropriation for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2022. Setting the salary for municipal court judge. Manager Hollashaw?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, tonight, the Director Danielson is on and pleased to share with you our proposed final budget based on the revisions agreed to during the preliminary budget adoption as well as the incorporation of carryover and end-of-year revenues is as well. And I know you've all received emails from me along the way based on the street assessment. I also want to share that I've had questions about the work plan for the team and based on that question, we have completed a revision into and you'll see within the budget itself, the work plan per your, each of your strategic outcomes, the work to be done this year by the teams. So I wanted to make sure. And then again, by the end of this year, we'll be working on performance measures and over the next three to seven years, really three to five years, working on fiscal stability. As you know, Mayor, it's more than money. So I will turn it over to Director Danielson. If you have any questions for me after that, let me know.
Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we have the presentation of the proposed final budget. final budget for fiscal twenty two before you. As Manager Harlow Shock mentioned, we incorporated the amendments that were approved by the commission on June twenty eighth. We've had an opportunity to update the fiscal twenty one estimated actuals. These are un-audited numbers, but we believe much closer to what we estimate for the fiscal year end to be. And so that did impact the beginning cash balances of most of the funds. I did, I do want to draw your attention to the summary of changes to the preliminary budget that I included in your pocket. And that goes over any changes that were made to both revenues and expenditures. And also a list of changes to the beginning cash balances to the funds that are reflective of the estimated actuals for fiscal twenty one being updated. So that was in your pocket. And if you have any questions about that, I can address that at the end. We also revised our cost allocation methodology with to a methodology that I feel captured more updated data. The methodology that had been used for the last several years had not had the opportunity to be updated with current data or and so I had the opportunity to do that and that resulted in an increase of revenue to the general fund of about three hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. Those cost allocations were based on budget year twenty one figures, which we will also shore up after we wrap up our final audited numbers. And if there's a variance of more than ten percent, we will go back and edit that and propose a budget adjustment to our budget amendment to the to the commission to shore up those those numbers. I don't believe that that has been the case in the past. They have always proposed to allocate general fund costs based on the current year budget and there was never a look back period. So I think that it's 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 an appropriate methodology to look at that, revise it and edit it if necessary. There's also we updated carryover, capital carryovers and more specifically in the streets fund. So you'll see a rather large change in their beginning cash balance because of the carryovers that we updated in fiscal twenty one for the streets fund. And we also added the staff member in the streets fund plus seasonals that were reflective of the streets fund budget amendments that were passed in on June twenty eighth. Again, I manager hollow shock added that I'd like to draw your attention also to the department work plans that were summarized. They were previously just sectioned out by department, but manager hollow shock had the opportunity to go through that and consolidate that into the robust work plans that all of the department directors will be working on. And she laid those out by the strategic initiatives that the commission had laid out for budget year twenty two. With that, I I don't believe there were any other changes from the preliminary to the final. And at this time, I am open for questions.
Thank you, Mayor. If I just would summarize one last item, this this budget represents a balanced budget. It's a more robust project, a process than you've seen in a great while in Helena. It is not increasing fines, fees or assessments at this time and represents current reflection, including carryover, which previously was not a part of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, just a
No, please go ahead.
I just had a, I just had a comment. I'm really appreciative of the the work plan update. I think that this is gives the community a clear idea of you know, what this budget actually translate to in terms of what we're doing. And I don't, I mean, I've never seen us produce anything like this before. So I'm really grateful for that to be included and I think I'm gonna print this off and hand it off to anybody who says, you know, what's happening here because I, this is just a very clear picture of and and ensures that people don't have to go hunting for numbers and instead a narrative example of what it actually looks like. So thank you for including that.
Thank you, Commissioner Halliday.
Sure, maybe for just Miss Danielson. So on page five with the cost allocation changes, can you just walk us through a couple of examples like what's going on with facilities management at forty five thousand, four hundred thirty four, gas tax at you know, under thirty four, two ninety two. Can you just explain what that means?
Yes, so those changes were were based on the methodology that I I put in place based on best practices that I've used in the past with other municipalities of allocating general fund costs. For example, if you were to look at legislative activities such as yourselves and the city attorney's office, I went through and researched all of the agenda items that's been heard before the commission and what what that represented and and the category that that represented. And then I allocated the legislative and city clerk and city attorney's time based on those agenda items to different funds and our divisions. Another example of allocating those changes would be the executive office and human resources and payroll allocating those casts based on FTEs, which makes more sense to me. Again, operating expenditures for public works administration and and as well as parks and recreation administration. Those, some of these deviated quite a bit from what had been used in the past. And so we are seeing a fairly large swing in some of those allocations, but I would foresee that those become more stable after this initial change in methodology. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Halliday?
Yeah, that that's really helpful and maybe just a quick follow up. So for someone who's reading this, is it correct to understand that facilities management, for example, two twelve, that the allocation to facilities management has gone up by four hundred, forty five thousand, four hundred thirty four, while something like let's see, recycling looks like it's gone down, twelve thousand, forty seven. Am I reading that correctly?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Olafman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just maybe a couple of questions for Director Danielson. So apologies if I missed this, but how how are we handling the ARPA funds? Will that be a budget amendment into the future? Or what what's the process for reflecting that in the budget?
Thank you, Commissioner Olafman. That's an excellent question. We have not had an opportunity to present to the commission on potential uses of those ARPA funds. So in the current budget, we have the revenue reflected for ARPA funds. However, we don't have any projections of expenditures yet because we haven't brought that to the commission's attention yet. So yes, that would be in the form of a budget amendment. That would be brought forward to the commission.
Okay, may I, sorry, can I ask a clarifying question? The activities are not the the modifier to the budget. The addition of the second allocation would be the increase. Would that be the modification of the budget? I guess I I actually don't don't know that we're on the same page on on what results in a modification to the budget for ARPA by the incorporation of these current revenue. We have those dollars adopted just like we would any other grant we've received in this current fiscal year. The second allocation, second tranche of ARPA dollars have not been allocated to the budget, but those activities within them are bringing to a commission. Will those activities require a budget modification? That's, I think, the question, if it results in a change in fund, is that, is that true?
And Mayor, maybe just a question to the city manager, what's the harm of being transparent and open about reflecting tho- those dollars in the budget?
Oh goodness, that's a good question. None, no problem at all. No, what I'm sharing to you is that the the need for the modified process. So just the question is modifying the budget requires the double hearings. So the, just like we do with any other grant, there is no reduced transparency. As I've shared before, the implication is that when we adopt any of those funds, we still come back and talk through how those activities work. It's just the opportunity we have right now, like we do with any other grant.
I mean, we we talk about it as a commission, but there's no public hearing, right? So if we want a full process, I is there merit to actually amending the budget?
Thank you, Commissioner Olafman. The amending the budget to, I can ask a clarifying question. When you say amend the budget, are you talking about the four million or the additional operational level ed- edits that you're describing? I'm just not sure.
Commissioner Olafman?
Yeah, I mean, my my understanding was that we were gonna discuss and amend the budget in in the future. It sounds like that is gonna be the process. It would just come up as a budget amendment and it later on.
For the addition of new dollars, absolutely. For the moment of funds between funds, absolutely.
Do we have any other questions from the commission?
Well, I I'm happy to hear it from Director Danielson as well. I do have one more question, but I wasn't, I didn't want to jump in if you had more to say on that.
Oh, Erica Danielson?
Yes, Commissioner Olafman, Mayor and other commissioners and and manager hollow shock. Currently, there are no expenditures budgeted for the ARPA dollars. Because the decision on how to spend those dollars has has not been decided yet. The expected revenues have been reflected in the budget document.
Okay, super helpful. Thank you. Um, so my, the other question I had Director Danielson, and maybe this is so the, okay, so that now I'm understanding if I'm looking at FY twenty one estimated actuals of our revenue, it's a bit does that, the FY twenty one then reflects the ARPA dollars? Or is it reflected in twenty two?
Thank you, Commissioner Olafman. We received our first tranche of funds in fiscal twenty one. So the revenue in twenty one reflects the amount received. And then there'll be another tranche that will be received in fiscal twenty two.
Okay. And then I'm just curious, you know, we had a fair amount of discussions during the budget process about revenue minus expenditures, sort of what was estimated to be one time expenditures versus ongoing. Do you have a sense? I mean, I'm looking at so total revenues for FY twenty two is projected at twenty four million. Total expenditures at twenty eight million, so it's a four million dollar difference. Do you have a sense of how much of that is that sort of deficit is ongoing at this point?
So I did do, I did do that calculation and it it's a little over a million dollars that was is is ongoing based on my initial calculation. I will remind the commission though that we have not reviewed revenues at this time for, you know, like, you know, incremental fees or whatnot that would cover that as well. And so that's that that piece along with trying to really dive into why the departments in the general fund and and other funds as well are consistently over budgeting what they're actually expending. And so I plan to dive into that as well to kind of determine really, is this an ongoing issue or or not? But that is something that we will be reviewing. I'll be reviewing and looking at with the department heads over the course of the next year before we we accumulate data to present to the commission the fiscal twenty three budget.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, just a question for Miss Danielson. On the cost allocation changes to various funds. You know, I see there's fewer funds there than, say, all of our funds like that are set out on the next page. But I was curious about, I didn't see transportation or streets fund in there. And I was curious about that one, since you seem to spend a lot of time talking about that one.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Halliday. I, the the list that I have below just includes the funds that I didn't address earlier in that document. So if you go down to page two of that document, it lists the street funds changes and the internal cost allocations for the streets department went up one hundred and eighty four thousand dollars.
Gotcha. And so do you see that number as sort of a fluctuating number? Or is that a like year over year, we need to start looking at the streets fund as having, you know, something in that hundred eighty five to two hundred thousand dollar range?
I would expect them to budget in that accord. However, it depends also, some of the, some of the allocations are based on agenda items on the commission. And as you can reflect back on the year, transportation and streets items tend to get on the agenda quite a bit more than than other items. And so they do get allocated more of those. You know, the the city attorney costs, the city manager and the legislative overhead, they they do tend to get more attention. And so I would expect that 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 allocation not to fluctuate too much unless they you know, their agenda items don't don't come down. But the rest of the allocations are based on operating costs, which are fairly consistent. It does not include capital. That's not part of the the formula. So but operating costs will will stabilize and and yes, so to to answer your question, I would expect that that to be consistent.
And then just another one in there. I noticed golf is up about ninety thousand. And I know, you know, knock on wood, golf will be its own sustainable fund in a few years and won't be drawing on the general fund. But I guess I'm just curious, if golf has a ninety thousand dollars essentially owed to the general fund, who, how how does that work? Does the general fund send ninety thousand to golf and then golf sends that ninety thousand back to the general fund? Or how do we, how do we account for that?
Thank you, Commissioner Halliday. That's a excellent question. And one of the questions and one of the policies that will be bring forward to the commission is subsidies. So you know, right now, it it's been every year, there's been a determination of how much the the general fund wants to subsidize other funds, such as the transit fund and the golf fund and the you know, other funds. So that that is a good question, and I think one that needs to be addressed and is a policy issue.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any other commissioners? Do we have any comments from the public on this topic? Madam Clerk, would you check?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I have no hands raised. I've received no written public comment on this item. There is no one here in the chambers with me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will I will move to approve a resolution adopting final budgets, budget authorities and appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty one ending June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty two and setting the salary for the municipal court judge.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday. Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no hands raised. I have no written public comment, and no one in the chamber still.
Any final comments from the commission? Not. This meeting is formally adjourned.